Well, good evening everyone. This is Dr. Jill Jim with the Navajo Department of Health. Today's August 27th, um, 2020 and this evening, um, I will be speaking with the President Nezahal regarding the town hall meeting that we usually do every other night. So I just wanted to welcome everyone and I just want to do a small prayer before we start this evening. So. Um, just bow your heads. First of all, thank you. Um, today is the day of celebration. Thank you very much. Now, where is the ceremony? Thank you. Uh, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Look at the ceremony, thank you. What are you saying? Thank you. Thank you. But to this thing, thank you very much. Thank you. The question is, thank you. Thank you. Which is done, which is done, it's called, done, it's a lot, thank you, not, it's not, it's not. Thank you, she, thank you, the nation, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, the question is, thank you, thank you. Ah, what's and, thank you. Thank you, hey, I, I can, that, that's different, thank you. It's done, it's a lot, thank you. I'm sick, yes, so, I'm glad, thank you. Thank you, but I see, thank you, I'm mad, I'm sad, I'm lonely, I'm sad, I'm lonely. Thank you, thank you, um. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Ah, thank you, thank you, I'm glad, thank you, thank you, I'm glad, thank you. The more is late, don't know which. Though, thank you, not, I'll do, though, um, thank you, I think. I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'll talk, thank you, I'll do, I'll do. I'll talk. But instead, yes. Thank you, I'm mad, I'm sad, I'm lonely, thank you, I think, I want to. I'll tell you, thank you, I'm glad, thank you. I'll tell you, thank you, I'll tell you. Um, but I'll try, I'm done, thank you. And thank you, here, I'm not, I'm not. Thank you, it's not, it's a lot. That's you, thank you, um. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, thank you, the question is. Now, thank you, thank you. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad. Thank you, so much, thank you, thank you. I'm here, I'm here, thank you, so, I'm going. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, but, but I need, I don't. Thank you, which is done, it's a lot, I'm glad. Eh, she, thank you, the nation, thank you, ah, thank you, thank you, so much, thank you. Like it, oh, thank you. Ah, thank you, thank you, um, I think. How did I call, thank you, I did, it's it, oh, I'm dead, oh, oh. Thank you, I call, thank you. Here, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Thank you, I'm glad, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, I had, I cut, done, it's a lot, I'm sure. Actually, thank you, that I, so, so, that I, I'm not there. But I'm not there. Thank you, she, I, I, I'm not, thank you. I'm not, I, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you. Eh, though, thank you. It's easy, yeah, I hope, thank you, but, but, thank you. But that's it, oh, thank you, but, but, I'm sure, yes, I'm sure, yes. Yeah, I hope, thank you, not, it's not. But then, it's, oh, I would, thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm glad, I'm glad. Thank you, thank you, I'm glad, thank you. But I'm glad, I'm glad, thank you. Thank you, the, the, I call, the, I, yes. Thank you, um, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. When it's a lot, oh, again, the, uh, now, now, this, oh, no. Thank you, I'm glad, thank you, thank you. Um, the, thank you, um, how did I call, um, they, yes. Thank you, um, but I'm here, though. Oh, though, thank you. Don't, I'm happy, yeah, though, though, I'm going, I'm going. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm glad. Ah, thank you, it's easy, I'm glad, so. Although. Do you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Um, thank you, President. I'll hand it over to you now.
Uh, I'm glad, uh, she's. Do, so, I'm happy, I'm happy, though, eh, she, but. I'm here, though, well, I'm glad, I'm glad. Then I can not give, though, that is, no, I'm sorry, I'm glad. Ah, though, do you, eh, yeah, could, oh, I'm. Bah, oh, I'm not. Joe, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. Did the question, it's, I, I, I. We can, I'm glad. Ah, oh, come. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, that, no, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Though, though, could, ah, though, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sure, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, Joe, eh. Uh, I'm here, it's a lot, I'm glad. Joe, could, oh, so, I'm glad, oh, oh, so, I'm glad. Eh, come, uh, Dr. Jill Jim, yeah, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad. Ah, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, I'm scared, eh, yeah. Could, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad, though, though, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, the, so, I'm glad, uh, yeah, I'm glad, so. So, eh, she, though, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, oh, Joe, eh, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, though, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, Joe, eh, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, uh, come. Uh. Eh, Joe, but, could, oh, eh, yeah, uh, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, though, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ah, though, do you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eh, yeah. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, do you, I'm glad, do you, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, I'm glad. I'm glad, eh, yeah, come. Uh, I'm glad. Uh, Joe, I'm, Joe, though, I, come, uh. Though, eh, I'm glad, Joe. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, she, I'm glad, I'm glad, could, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, she, eh, yeah, I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad. Joe, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, 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 I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, eh, yeah, I'm glad. I could, do you, eh, yeah, come, I'm glad, I'm glad. See, but then. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm here, she, don't, I'm here, see. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Now, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, in. Do, uh, should I, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. She, I'm glad, first of all, much, I, I, now, 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 so, eh, she, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eh. Now, now, it's, eh, the meal, yeah, yeah. Don't, I'm happy, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, oh, eh, come, uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, do you, the question, it's, I, I'm glad. Ah, though, do, uh. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Though, do you, Joe, twenty four hours, they're, I'm glad, uh, come. Uh, uh, twenty four hours, I'm glad, yeah. I'm glad, eh, yeah, do you, yeah, do you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, yeah, come, I'm glad, do you, the question, it's, I, I'm glad. Ah, though, do you, now, it's, eh. The meal, yeah, yeah, don't, I'm happy, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, yeah. Uh. See, be. See, be, the meal, yeah, yeah, don't, I'm glad, I'm glad, see, be. I'm glad, oh, eh, yeah, come, I'm glad, I'm glad. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, eh, I'm glad, Joe. Could, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad, Dr. Jill Jim, though. David Nez, could, it's, it's, I'm glad, yeah, I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, she, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Come, eh, yeah, go. Do you, the question, it's, I, I, it's, I, it's not, I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, now, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, yeah, come, I'm glad, see, but then. Do you, Joe. Ah, though, do. Ah, though, you, the, oh, yeah, I'm glad, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. Eh, though, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, I'm glad, eh, yeah, do you, the question, it's, eh, yeah, could, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, come, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. Do you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, oh, eh, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, she, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. Come, uh, uh. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ah, though, uh, do you, come. Uh, a team. Don't, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Joe, eh, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Do, uh, eh, ah. Now, it's, eh, it's, ah, now, it's, eh, all, hello. Now, it's, eh, all, hello. Though, been, go, I'm glad, all, hello. Eh, don't, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Though, now, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Should I, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, though, don't, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, Joe, do you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Joe, I'm glad, eh, uh. Do you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. The more, yeah, I'm glad, the more, yeah, Saturday, I'm glad. Eh, ah. Now, it's, eh, all, hello. I'm glad, eh, come, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. The more, yeah, yeah. Now, it's, eh, all, hello, don't, eh, the more, I'm glad, Sunday. All day, Sunday. Ah, thank you, Sunday, be, yeah. The more, I'm glad. Ah, though, the more, be, I'm glad, I'm glad, Monday, been, go, I'm glad, all, hello, and, ah. Eh, team, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, though, now, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, do you, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry. Yeah, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, yeah, go, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry. So, she, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Do you, the question, it's, I, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. So, come, I'm sure, uh, do you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Oh, now, it's, eh, do you, now, it's, eh, do you, now, it's, eh, do you, now, it's, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, oh, eh, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, eh, I'm glad. Come, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, eh, eh, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Today, do you, eh, yeah, could, oh, Dr. Jill Jim. Eh, she, eh. Could, oh, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Do you contact traces, they're, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, yeah. I'm glad, I'm glad. How, eh, she, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. She, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ah, though, I'm glad, 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 Joe. Though, I'm, though, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, I, though. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, she. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, could, oh, I'm glad, eh. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, Joe, I'm glad, yeah. So, I'm sorry, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Now, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ah, though, come, though, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you, the, she, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure. Uh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Eh, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sure, she, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. Ah, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. Eh, though, Joe, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, no, though. Joe, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, Joe, eh, I'm glad, eh, come, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm glad, yeah, though, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm glad, though, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, do you, I'm sorry, do you, I'm sorry, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. See, be, see, be, do you, I'm glad, see, be. The meal, so, I'm glad, I'm glad, eh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's me. Eh, I'm sorry, eh, could, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sure, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, no, could, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. Do you, uh, uh. Uh, propane, that, eh, give, eh, though, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, no, I'm glad. Uh, now, so, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, do you, oh, come, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Though, eh, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. Eh, I'm glad, 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 I'm glad. I'm glad, which, I'm glad, yeah. Eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ah, though, come, I'm glad, yeah, yeah, I'm glad, 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 yeah. Eh, I'm glad, eh, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sure, I'm sure. The best one, I'm glad, uh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm sure, I'm sure. Uh, it's, she, the, um, bills, pay, they're, I'm glad, I'm glad. Joe, I'm glad, eh, yeah, it, I'm glad, I'm glad. Do you, I'm glad, I'm sure, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Do you, uh. Telephone or iPad, I'm. Jo di ah telephone or iPad da dat e gi jo di. Bin dal kidigi e ilhatcha debajalak. Do altsko nikhalchin beda haloda. Jo ychna che daoltcha. E da la. Ban dahui dilnehi bich e kodadi ilnil. Ychna che daoltcha dolneh ta di no ochta. Ah nal sos bikad ilya. Ado ichik e riye ne kon ye go bichin da haztegi. La shei ahndailneshinde. La shei ah nichichinda ilyen de. E do atixnit. Nichik e nichin ne bahajo ba. Chetad e negi e ltsabekadichah. Ashhon shik e nohlini. Arok la da da hatneya. Shei e klod ikeshte. Shudu shikad olu wala. Winzin. Ashi ni ochta oh nteh. Jo do la besota. Altsko. Ne danlenegi bekai chet o e du kuijane de ya na kitka di xla da beso. De bich e dolni. La shei ahndaltnesh. E. Panse dakhesh shik e roshun ne ashhon de ashhonige joba inxker odixne. Ala no ta ala no zenno alen danichin naalnegi. So ere ochta. So e e altsosgo shei kudo ah denek echin yichehasi dolneh to belaganak. Echa arok kudo shei. Nakhan dal neshigi itzlet de lenegi kudo. Um sitsu yichehana do Dr. Jill Jim. Ah kon de. I just want to um. Um. Give you an overview real quick. Um Dr. Jill Jim has a lot of information. Um. To give to our people. Um and sometimes when I do the report, you know, I do it in Navajo, doing in English. It takes a long time. People start logging off. I really want to give some attention to Dr. Jim. She's expert. She oversees Department of Health, the Navajo Nation Department of Health. Give her a little bit of time. So Eli, if you could just, I'm going to do this quickly in English. Eli, if you could put that um. Um. Table. That slide on the uh on the Facebook Live. Just to let everybody know that today's cases, and these are cases twenty four hours. So the tests that have been completed. Ninety three thousand. Five hundred and sixty five. Tests have been given. So. That is over forty five percent of our Navajo population. So within the forty. Within the twenty four hours. There have been four hundred and thirty. Uh. Tests completed. And negative tests. Uh seventy nine thousand one hundred and forty five. So three hundred and ninety nine in twenty four hours. Uh. Tested negative. Uh positive nine thousand six hundred and remember nine thousand six hundred and one. This is from the start of the pandemic to today. People have recovered. Uh within twenty four hours, I think this is the lowest in a very long time. Where we only have four positive cases. Good job Navajo Nation, good job Navajo people. And let's not let up. Let's not let up, let's not let up, everybody. Let's continue to wear our masks. Social distance, washing our hands with soap and water. Uh use hand sanitizers and stay at home as much as possible. There's no cure. There's no vaccine for COVID nineteen. So let's stay the course. Let's let's not think. Oh, man, it's over, it's it's over now. No, it's not. Let's keep going. So out of that nine hundred, you might see a difference, three hundred and ninety nine negative. For twenty four hours and then four cases positive. So if you subtract that from the four thirty, that's. That's the um. On still pending, they're still at the lab. Of the nine thousand six hundred and one uh positive cases. Seven thousand and twenty seven have recovered. And we know we've seen a lot of recoveries out there. Our friends, some of our our family members have recovered. Ah congratulation, awesome job. Uh, you know, for isolating yourself, keeping yourself in quarantine. Some of you chose to go to the hotels here on Navajo. So you don't. You're not in close proximity to your family members. And I thank you for taking that sacrifice for fourteen days. Now fourteen days is a long time. But you know, it's well worth it so that doesn't spread within your. Your uh your home. Uh to this day, four hundred and ninety nine. People have lost their lives. Within twenty four hours, we lost one life. One way too many. Let's keep our loved ones in on our thoughts and in our prayers. This evening, please, I challenge you all. To keep our loved ones in prayer. We have these meetings every Tuesdays and every Thursdays. Tuesdays at ten AM, Thursdays, we changed it from ten AM. To six PM on Thursdays. Uh there was some comments to change it, so we moved it. But when we changed it. You know, our staff are at home during that time. So some of our staff are unable to be on the call to give updates. Um. But some are able to do it, you know, I mean, people do have families, our our. Leadership cabinet members do have families. So tonight may be just us waiting for others to get on and we'll see. Uh later on. Uh throughout the evening, if they do call in. Uh. We are, this is something that that. I want you all to um ponder or to think about. You know, um people are looking at the Navajo Nation now as a. A case study. They're asking, how did you do it? To get the virus under control within a short period of time? And it's because of you, the Navajo people. That brought these numbers down by listening to. Our leaders, our public health professionals. And following through on that, you know, yeah, of course. We put some stringent public health orders in place. Like wearing masks in public, you have to. Uh doing curfews and lockdowns, we had to. But you know what? We saw the results, we see the results. It's not about taking anybody's freedom away. It's about keeping our Navajo people safe, our grandmas, our grandpas, our nullys, our children. And you have done. An excellent, outstanding job, Navajo people. Now that I said that, I also want to say it's not time for us to get complacent. It's not time for us to say, oh, the 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 whole COVID. Is is kind of over and we can start doing whatever we want to do, no. So the whole month of September. The next month that's coming up, we're going to be doing. The same curfews. From nine PM to five AM. All the weekends are going to be thirty two hours. Saturday. Uh from nine PM all the way to Monday at five AM. Closure, total closure. Uh let's let's keep keep the momentum going. But I know when we had the fifty seven hour, which included Fridays. Uh people were wanting to get wood and prepare their. Their farms and their produce for the winter. And yes, we have a teaching that says, let's get ready for the winter. And that's why we reopened Saturday. And please. We reopen Saturday because we got to prepare for the winter. We didn't reopen Saturday to go to Zion's or Grand Canyon. Or Moab or other places to travel with your family. We we, you know, this, we're in a public health emergency, ladies and gentlemen. We're in an emergency. There is no vaccine, there's no cure for COVID nineteen. So I I plead with you Navajo people. That let's use Saturdays to get stocked up, whatever we need. Yes, you can go to the store, get your essential items. Wear your mask, social distance, you know, carry a hand sanitizers around. Uh but quickly go home. And that's what Saturdays was reopened for so that we can prepare for the winter. And we are out there uh almost every week now. And we're going to step that up because we want to keep reminding everybody. Uh that we can't let down. So. We were in Window Rock District. Uh handing out um. Hand sanitizers, homemade masks, pamphlets. To get you information, we were in Chinli last week. Doing the same thing, you saw probably saw the roadblock. Uh when you see a roadblock, you're you're kind of, you know, you're like, whoa, what's happening? Uh I'm hoping that a roadblock keeps that. Um discussion happening with your families about the need to continue to wear masks. And to keep your hands clean. And to stay home. And so tomorrow, we're going to be up in Crown Point, somewhere in the Crown Point District. Handing out hand sanitizers, masks and also. Uh the pamphlets. Uh for everybody to get more information on. And we'll be having some folks helping us out, get some US Census material out to. Our people out there. So I I want to challenge everyone out there. Uh to please be counted. Be counted. Ashhon, I I plead with you. It it doesn't take that long, Google US Census for twenty twenty. You know, we always pride ourselves as the biggest tribe. Guess what, ladies and gentlemen? We have only reported here on the Navajo Nation seventeen percent. We only have one more month, the whole month of September. To get the census information back. To the US Census to be counted. One month itzi. And we need to do that, please. Uh and we're going to have a bigger effort trying to get everybody. Overall, in the state of Arizona, we're above sixty percent. Of the Navajo Nation, sixty percent. Arizona wide. And here Navajo Nation is seventeen percent. And Eli, do you still have that graph of the five agencies? If you could put that up? You know, seventeen percent here on Navajo. And it's important, ladies and gentlemen. That we get counted. Or we can't say we're the biggest tribe. And it's up to all of us, you know, seven hundred and fourteen million dollars. Came to the Navajo people because of those census numbers. And also with political representation, did you know? That if Arizona, the entire state. Gets an accurate count of our citizens? That we may be able to have one more. Congressperson to represent us. One more. And District One for Congress is the biggest district in Arizona. One of the biggest districts throughout this country. So that could be small. If you look at the screen right now, you that's seventeen point six percent. Of reporting. And I want to make this into a competition. You got five agencies, ladies and gentlemen. And right now Fort Defiance Agency is in the lead. And. They are at twenty point nine percent. Chinli Agency, come on Chinli, fourteen. Uh point eight percent. Western Agency, come on Western, we're. I'm from Western, so seventeen point five percent. Eastern Agency seventeen point seven percent. And Northern Agency at seventeen point four percent. So come Monday. I'm gonna. Show you the update on the agencies. So you know, get get the word out. Um and let's bring those numbers up from seventeen, ladies and gentlemen. Uh. Lastly, I just want to say, oh, I was talking about something for Navajo people to consider. See, people are looking at Navajo. And so there's an opportunity now. For the Navajo Nation to um. To be a part of the third stage of some of these. Uh vaccine clinical trials. I mean, I'm not saying we're going to be guinea pigs. Third stage is way up there. And since people are looking at the Navajo Nation, if there are folks that want to volunteer. To try one of these. Uh vaccine clinical trials, then. We should allow it, right? We should be able to allow some family or someone. If they are in severe condition of COVID nineteen to try one of these vaccines. And uh. You know, it's some we're in third stage of those trials, so it's been looking good. So we want to be able to be in the forefront too. Of this pandemic. And here's an opportunity. It's not for everybody, you'll, if you want to do it, you can. I've heard some of our Navajo people get the plasma. And they have recovered. So they're already doing some type of clinical trials. On some of our citizens that leave the nation. At other healthcare facilities often have one. Now we're looking at here on the Navajo Nation. And so that that option could be there for you. You know. And so ladies and gentlemen, something to think about. We're doing our fiscal year twenty twenty one budget, our our staff. Our cabinet members are just spread thin right now. Not many are going to be able to uh. Uh be on the call tonight or be on the town hall. You know. Our cabinet members, I'll stop, I'll I'll end with this, our cabinet members, our employees, you know, we're we're all human. And we go through some tough times here. Just like anybody else, you know. And I just want to ask for prayer. Uh for the cabinet members and our staff out there. We're going into so much uncertainty. This has never happened at this scale. I understand you, many of Navajo people are frustrated. But we've never been through something like this, ladies and gentlemen. I know I could easily say, I ask for your patience. But we are doing our very, very best. Going through this pandemic. And I I thank you for the prayers. I really need you to say a prayer for our cabinet members and our staff. Many of them are struggling. Many of them have family members or friends getting the virus or, you know, everyday situations happen. And we're not immune to that as human beings. So let's pray for strength. Wisdom, protection and good health. I ask for your prayers and I pray for the same for all of you that are out there in Navajo Nation. So keep strong, stay strong. We'll get through this together like we stayed together on many of these issues, you know. I try to stay positive and hopeful. Because. As leaders, we need to do that. And to make sure that we're out there shoulder to shoulder with our. Employees. Those that are on the front lines. So those of, let's pray for our people that are on the front lines. Doing their very best for the Navajo people. And that's all we can do. Is do our very best for each and every one of you. We love you, we appreciate you. Let's not have all this division seep into the Navajo Nation. There's division all around us in cities throughout the country. Ladies and gentlemen. Don't let that seep into the nation. Let's keep stay positive. And let's stay strong, let's unify and keep ourselves strong for one another. Because we need each other to get through this virus. And we have the ability to beat this monster called COVID nineteen. And I know we can. So with that, thank you for listening this evening. Uh and we appreciate. The hard work each and every one of you are doing. I know you are doing some great work throughout the Navajo Nation. And you can see that, ladies and gentlemen. Four cases. Four positive cases within twenty four hours. I commend you, Navajo people, for listening to leaders. Listening to the professionals and not pushing back. Because that's how we're going to get through this pandemic. By honoring and respecting our leaders. God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. And turn the time over to Dr. Jill Jim, you ready, Dr. Jim? Uh and um. Uh she's getting ready. Let let me put that PowerPoint, I totally spaced out that PowerPoint. The second batch of the PowerPoint, Eli, let me go through that real quick. Um and what that PowerPoint shows is how these numbers are going down. Here on the Navajo Nation, it shows you the number. It shows you the numbers from the start to the end. I mean, start to actually yet today, at 5:00 PM when we got the uh, the report. You see it there. Uh, it shows you the numbers. You can see how it scaled up and scaled back down. And we, and today, four positive cases. Go ahead and change the, to the next uh slide, uh Eli. And I'm sure um Dr. Jim is gonna talk more in depth on this. Uh, on the next slide, it shows the uh progression of the virus. Uh, go ahead, next one. That's the agency one. There we go. You can see, this is the uh, the curve, the epic curve, fourteen day downward trajectory. You can see, it looks like uh a mountain. It goes all the way up, and then it comes all the way down. And that's where we're at right now uh for the virus. So the question is, is there a fourteen day downward trajectory? And I think it's fair to say, right, Dr. Jim, that yes, we, we have. So the next slide, now that shows you uh the color codes. Uh, Dr. Jim will talk about the color codes. There's green, yellow, orange, red. And when we reopen, we were in orange status. But look at the, look at the, the, the chart there. It shows that um Chin Lee is still in orange, Crown Point is in yellow, Fort Defiance, orange, Gallup, orange, K- Kenta, Shiprot, yellow, Tubus City and Winslow are still orange. So that's how we're gonna figure how some of these restrictions are gonna go away and, and opening up uh more of the businesses because it are gonna be going in percentage, twenty-five percent of the total occupancy, maybe fifty percent as the, as the color codes go up, seventy-five and so on. If you can go to the next slide, uh Eli. Uh, and we just want to let you know that you can uh look at our guide. Dr. Jim and her team have done an outstanding job in developing that booklet that you can actually read and sh- and will tell you what we're basing our uh, uh, our decisions on. And if you can see here on this uh slide, it shows that uh throughout the country, you see all the red, the dark red, and then the, the, just the red, the yellow and the green. And you can see the four corner states. Uh, Utah and Arizona are in red, uh Colorado and New Mexico are yellow. And look at the Navajo Nation, guys, yellow. And if you look at the chart there, look at the reds. They don't require masks there. Now, and you see a picture of masks in Colorado, New Mexico, and Navajo Nation? We require masks. Those three states require masks, and that is the reason why, you know, we have low numbers now, and they're in the yellow. And you know, and Dr. Jim will talk about that uh more in depth. So I just wanted to share with you uh just kind of a, a bigger picture of where we're uh, where we are throughout the United States and in the Southwest. So, Dr. Jim, you ready? Turn it over to you. Dr. Jim, have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, President, for all that information. That's very useful. I'm gonna take off my mask here since I'm the only one in this office here. So it's very important that we continue to um do preventive measures. And I appreciate the tribal leadership and all the citizens that are continuing to um practice the five major um preventive measures. And I can show you um a PowerPoint here that I usually like to present, um that gives you kind of a general idea of all the stuff that we all need to do on a regular basis. So I appreciate everyone's time here. Um, sometimes these are done at the be- end of the town hall sessions, but these are um flyers that are gonna be distributed to the different stores, grocery stores, and businesses across the Navajo Nation. So hopefully, we can get these out to the businesses. So if you see the sign, um posted on any of the door, it's basically just a general and kind reminder to wear your mask indoors and outdoors, and also maintaining six feet of this physical distance, especially if you don't have a mask by any chance. But that's very important to make sure you maintain the six feet distance in even when you're out in a home or visiting someone that you're not familiar with. Not in your how, a traditional household, I would say. Washing hands with soap and water for twenty seconds is always very important, especially if you're gonna um be eating. Um, those are the very important times as even though you might have washed your hands. And I always like to wash my hands, um especially if I'm at work or somewhere, um right before I eat or have a he- or use a hand sanitizer. And having that more available. I did see in the comments that um someone was indicating that Walmart does have hand sanitizer. So there seems to be some access to hand sanitizer. So I also will do a kind reminder about disinfectant um safety as well, and also hand sanitizer safety as well. So also um cleaning and disinfecting high touch surfaces are also very important, even at work, in your vehicle, when you're doing your errands, or at home as well. Um to continue to do um cleaning practices um anywhere you are. I know that there are some um hand sanitizer, I guess wipes that are, there are shortages in that. And I've seen also, and people do their homemade um hand sanitizer wipes as well, um which is fine if you use a certain um solution for the alcohol use, or either um plain alcohol or either other types of um bleach solutions, um as long as you keep safety measures in mind as well. Other areas that we continue to have questions about is also um your face mask that I was um previously wearing. Um, across the Navajo Nation, when employees return back to work, we wanted to ensure the employees have um information regarding proper mask wearing in the workplace. So there is always um the practicing of wearing that indoors and outdoors. So wear a mask correctly for maximum protection, as you might indicate that some people may not fully cover their nose, or um it might not extend all the way to their chin. So, and that's um definitely important to wear that correctly because if you don't wear it correctly, then you're not maximizing the protection of those masks because it masks because it's intended to uh make sure that there are no droplets that you are, I'm going to um get on your skin or inhale any droplet. So that's the main reason, as we have understood COVID-19, it is like the flu. So if people are out there sick, and they shouldn't be, and they're sneezing, or they're coughing, you're protecting yourself and also the other person from spreading their germs onto you. So put it over your nose and mouth and secure it under your chin. And fit, fit snugly against the side of your face. Also, don't put the mask around your neck or other, or on your forehead. Also, don't touch the mask. And if you do, wash your hands or use hand sanitizer to disinfect. And there has been a CDC study. Um, I, I don't have the information about different masks that are either considered effective or not effective. So just know those studies have occurred in, in the United States where you can um properly identify a, a type of face mask that is considered more effective. Also, understand how to clean your fa- fabric face mask as well. You can wash it by hand. Prepare a bleach solution, um which will consist of mixing five tablespoons of household bleach per gallon of room temperature water, or four teaspoons of household bleach per quart of room temperature water as well. And then soak the mask in the bleach solution for five minutes, rinse thoroughly with coal or room temperature water, and then use one mask per day. So um the mask that I had here, the blue mask, these are only for one day's use, or um, and, and this shouldn't be used more than one day. So make sure you switch this out. Um, if you do have a cloth mask, make sure you follow these solutions for um wearing these fabric face masks. And also, your mask should be um washed after each use. And so don't reuse your mask. If you um, if you are using a washing machine, you use regular laundry and the warmest appropriate water setting for the cloth to use to make the mask. There are different ways to dry your um fabric mask as well. Um, you can completely, completely dry your mask after washing, either line drying it, or either using it um in a dryer, or putting it in a dryer at the highest setting um heat possible. So just ensure that there are some recommendations on proper um care of face masks because um you would notice there is, and when we received a lot of donations, they were just made in different types of masks. Some had the strap that goes around your, your head, and some had different um materials. I know that one of them, uh when I had, had deteriorated. And actually, it was, I don't know what kind of material it was, but you have to replace the strings. And then also have to make sure that it fits snug, snugly. So there might be some repairs that you might have to do um for your face mask. So these are just general instructions, not only for employees, but also general end of um citizens of the Navajo Nation. And also, just a, a gentle reminder on washing your hands to prevent COVID-19. Um, there is a video, I think we have with the Ms. Navajo on the Navajo Department of Health webpage that does show um different um ways to wash your hand, but also a demonstration. So always wash your hands. Make sure it's completely wet. Make sure there's enough soap to cover all your hands. And also making sure that you rub in between your hands also, and in between your hands around, and then washing your thumb, and then circling in your palm, and also the top. And then uh making sure you have enough time to clean your fingertips as well. So there are many demonstration videos that you can find on YouTube, and also the CDC or the World Health Organization might have some guidelines on visually seeing, washing your hand. Make sure you rinse hands with water as, after you um wash your hands for at least twenty seconds and dry completely, or use a single um used towel as where, as well as air dry. So make sure you completely dry your hands before you um tend to other businesses afterwards. Another prevention m- information is just that the mention of just asymptomatic and symptomatic individuals. So when we now start talking about individuals that uh may present symptoms of COVID-19, COVID-19, or have no symptoms of COVID-19, um that's a very large concern. Um, as we have understood by CDC, that a lot of younger individuals um are um asymptomatic, which means they're not displaying ins- uh any symptoms, but there, there could be super spreaders. And so when we talk about super spreaders, someone might not know that they are um spreading the disease because they might have mild symptoms or have no symptoms. And so we often also um see that in children. So when we think about COVID-19, that's why the school um reopening is very important, that these are some considerations and recommendations from the public health and medical professionals to the schools um that we're working with. Uh, we're very concerned about the super spreaders and also individuals that are asymptomatic. And especially if kids don't know they have symptoms, they can easily spread the, the disease at home and, and without really knowing it. And so that's what asymptomatic means. And these are individuals, like I said, that are show mild symptoms, and they also carry the virus and, and getting others sick without knowing. And they also, um, someone who suspects, suspects or knows they have ex- been exposed to COVID-19 should self-quarantine for ten days. So that's the determining factor is just knowing when to um self-quarantine yourself. It's very important. There's a time factor for the amount of days because um these symptoms don't develop in, um, some may develop in two days, in three days, in four days. Some might become um active as far as coughing, or um sneezing, or um having fever until ten days. So there's a duration um during this time period that individuals who think they have been exposed should take this very seriously because they could be spreading the virus when they don't know it. And so COVID-19 symptoms appear, like I mentioned, within two to fourteen days. So it's very important to use these facts to keep your elders and family and community safe from COVID-19. So remember, the best way to avoid becoming infected is to practice social distancing and wear a mask when out in public. I did see the lot of comments that our um Navajo citizens and relatives are out there practicing um wearing masks um out in public. But I also would like to see individuals wearing masks, especially if non-household members are being invited to your home because you don't know um if these individuals are asymptomatic or not. So when you are in your own household, yes, it makes sense because you live with these individuals, you are in the home, so you um don't need to really wear a mask. So, but when you do invite others, I mean, I think others should not get offended when you tell them to wear a mask, especially if they're coming by. But at the same time, I did have um an informational sheet at one time about no visitors. That um there is a no visitors. Uh, there was a point in time where we started hearing that um when relatives or people had a no visitor sign. Um, there are cases that we did hear when people did have no visitor signs and have invited their own family to come into their home. They were infected by COVID-19 even though they had a no visitor sign. So the only way to make that really effective is to ensure that you do tell people that, especially if you're protecting an elder, or either a person with underlying health conditions, that you're not allowing visitors and you're the caretaker. So if you want to provide um food to, to the elder, or to the, to the family member, they can leave um food or items outside the door, and, and that should be acceptable. So there was a point in time where we were hearing that family members or even individuals were not um thinking that, or they were offended by the no visitor sign. So just know those are options out there for um prevention that should continue to be done until we have a vaccine or uh some sort of treatment. Now, without that, we still have to practice really strict um social distancing and also, what I also refer to as physical dis- physical distancing as well. So as I mentioned, when it is safe to be around others, um if you had COVID-19, and COVID, individuals that have COVID-19 can live and be around us, and they're survivors. It's, there is no reason to be um afraid of them after they've recovered. There's a large number of people that have recovered from the positive cases that we've seen on the Navajo Nation. So I think it's needs to be um brought to the attention of our own family and relatives that um at a certain point, they will no longer be shedding, and they're just gonna be like everyone else. So I think there needs to be some distinctions on making sure that um if we think about COVID-19, that um it is important to also stay home and stay away from others, even during the time where you think you have COVID-19. And so that's very important to isolate and/or quarantine, especially um older adults and other individuals um with health conditions. So there are um different risk populations that CDC has identified, and those are individuals with diabetes, hypertension, individuals um with cancer, or either um diseases that have um immunosuppressed systems, or either um they don't have a strong immune system to defeat a disease like COVID. And that's, and because of that, we really have to ensure that we are making every precaution that we can. So if you think you had COVID-19 and had symptoms, then you should be around others after ten days um since your first symptom appeared, and also at least twenty-four hours since your last fever without use of fever-reducing medications, such as ibuprofen or Tylenol. And that any of your symptoms have improved at that point, if you were experiencing nausea, fever, body aches, muscle aches, are some common symptoms that we, we've heard. And we also heard that there are um other symptoms that CDC says not just heard, but there are symptoms also vary. So not each person is gonna experience the same symptoms. So it is recognized as a respiratory disease, but we also know that COVID-19 now in impacts different health organs across your body and in your body. So I just want to make that known, that the impact of COVID-19 is um, there's a long recovery for some individuals, especially if you're older and have health conditions. Your recovery from um COVID might be consisting of either some sort of physical or um neurological impairment that um we are seeing as well. So it's very important to know that um that COVID does have a lot of impact. And so when you test positive and you have no symptoms, so that would be an asymptomatic person. And if you continue to have no symptoms, you can be others af- around others after ten days have passed since your test, and also to you continue to have no symptoms as well. So these are just some time factors that I think will guide individuals that are out in the community. And when you identify yourself as a close contact. And so for- And so for anyone who has been around a person with COVID-19, you might be considered a close contact, and it's important to quarantine for 14 days after exposure, based on the time it takes to develop the illness. So the exposure report requiring what we identify close contact is, some say like the six feet distance, but we refer to the three feet distance with 15 minutes or more duration with an individual that might have tested positive. So I hope that this gives everyone some guidelines around understanding when you have to identify when to be around individuals if you think you had COVID or have COVID-19. As I mentioned before, 45% of our cases for COVID on the Navajo Nation are between the ages of 18 and 44. So young, young adults make up, make up half of the COVID-19 cases on the Navajo Nation. So just know that when we say young, sometimes we think it's like 18, 19, or 20, but the duration of the age or the range is between 18 to 44. So it's a pretty long or wide age range here. So it is 18 years and older that are seeming to be getting cases of COVID. So most young people, like I mentioned, are, they may not feel sick, and they also, some may do and all can infect others without knowing. So it's really up to us, our self-responsibility to protect yourself, your friends and family. And we always readdress in a lot of these misogynistic, public health misogyny, wear a mask, stay six feet apart, wash your hands and stay home, especially if you feel like you have COVID and together we can stop the spread. And since school has started, as I mentioned earlier, that school has been in session. So there's a lot of pickup materials. I know I receive phone calls from the school for my child and usually ask for school pickup and they do sort of a contactless delivery option if you pick up materials at the school. So just know that you have to still stay vigilant while you pick up schoolwork, food or school materials at school or the bus stop. The more people you interact with at a large gathering and the longer the interaction lasts, the higher risk of becoming infected. So I mean, even when you're at the school, I just hope that everyone is still practicing social distancing or trying to do contactless deliveries. And there should be non-congregating of individuals within a common area, especially if there are really limited ventilation. So to stay safe, safe, when you do pick up your materials, do not pick up supplies if you are sick or have been exposed to COVID-19. I mean, that, that just means that you're protecting yourself from spreading and also protecting others from getting sick. And so right now, you might be thinking about being sick. I talked about COVID-19, but there are other bugs that are around. There is stomach flu, there is other allergies. So sometimes it's really difficult to determine. So if you're sick at any time, you should not be out in public because you really don't know if you have COVID or not until you get tested. So that's very important, any kind of illness or being sick, and if you don't know if it's related to COVID or COVID-19, work on ways to find someone to help you pick up materials at the school. Also maintain a six feet distance from others, wearing a mask, and bring in your own pen to sign documents. I also think that this is one good practice that everyone can do. You can begin to carry an extra pen in your bag, especially if you're out running errands or especially if you're at work too, to sign your own documents and making sure that, that you have a sign in or sign out, if you might have that at work, or you might have that, since more services are being open from the tribal programs, you might have some sort of sign in and sign out now, and that will require using a pen. And so the best thing is just to carry a pen around so you can use that to sign documents and also respectfully discouraging handshakes too. I know that a lot of individuals do the elbow kind of bumps as well, and those are just fine. I know that our culture of shaking hands and hugging has changed, and one day we will begin to do that, but at this point, because the way the disease spreads is really through that minimal contact and with individuals that we don't know could be, could be sick or not, or maybe asymptomatic. So clean and disinfect all the items that you bring back from the school. Wash your hands with water and soap for 20 seconds, and if you don't have that, use a hand sanitizer. Other recommendations the Health Command Center goes over is just the recommendations we have under our Community Mitigation Group. We do have the incident command structure that we follow, and under that we have a COVID-19 Response Team that includes a medical professionals through the Indian Health Service and also the tribal health organizations, and we collaborate with other tribal programs and divisions as well. And within those teams, we do strategize on ways to provide recommendations to the community, and we include traditional practitioners on these kinds of information to ensure that we're giving enough information to provide advice to individuals. So this definitely includes, here's what you can do to stay safe. I mean, you recommend remote prayers and ceremonies, no large gatherings in closed areas, and also limit five or fewer people and stay six feet apart. Do not attend if you are sick, do not attend if you are exposed to COVID-19. Use a shade house or hog on or home with windows and doors open. Everyone must wear a face mask, do not hug or shake hands, avoid sharing objects, tobacco, smoking pipes, drinking cups, utensils and food, because those are all ways of transmitting the disease. Any sort of droplet that is on the cups or the pipes or the food, and that's why we are really encouraging individuals to not share these kinds of items and any kind of ceremony. Bringing your own individual water is very important in closed containers. Prepare your own supply of medicine, herbs or pollen that might be needed for the ceremony. Avoid sharing medicine, herbs in bundles. Clean and disinfect all objects used. Wash your hands after or and use a hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. Eat meals while seated more than six feet apart and then avoid having children at the ceremony as, as much as possible. And then the sweat lodge is very important too. There have been outbreaks with several cases regarding sweat lodge. So due to those minor outbreaks in the communities, we're just making sure that people do, conduct proper and safe sweat lodge ceremonies. And so the, the more people you interact with, especially in a really enclosed area, it's very, it's going to get very challenging and difficult and the risk of getting COVID-19, even if individuals may think they might not have COVID, but there could be that risk of having an asymptomatic individual. So the current recommendations that we are providing is that there is one person in a sweat lodge at a time. Avoid sharing items, towels, clothing, water, pans and cups, the same thing. Preparing your own supply of medicine, bringing your own water. Do not insert hands in another person's medicine bag. Wear a face mask and bring a towel to sit on and remove after use. Have someone outside for any assistance. Ventilate air out of the sweat lodge for at least 24 hours before reuse. Remove and hang in any fabric door, floor coverings and direct sunlight. Clean and disinfect other items used. Also just another reminder, as people have come back to work, our employees for the Navajo Nation or just private business owners, as you're looking to support the 25% of the reopening of the Navajo Nation at the Orange Phase, which is 25%, these are just some common day practices that I mentioned. So in your workplace setting, there are items that we still need to consider by staying home when you're sick. So it's very important that you are staying home. And right now, there, for the Navajo Nation, we do have the COVID leave that can be used if it is related to COVID. So, but otherwise, there are precautions like you need to take. There are other bugs around, like I mentioned. So just being careful of these symptoms that are related to COVID need to be recognized by individuals as they're maybe assessing themselves to see if they were exposed or if they possibly are sick. So that's why you monitor your health, how are you feeling? Are you tired and stressed out and what are those reasons? And, and so it's very important to think about that as you may be experiencing some symptoms. So wear a cloth face covering as well when you're in the workplace. Practice social distance in shared spaces. Wash your hands with soap and water often and also cover your coughs and sneezes. Avoid sharing objects and equipment. So if you are in the office and you do have a conference room, I know that in our offices, there might be 10 chairs that's available, but now we only can use seven. We have, we might have seven chairs and we now can only have three, three chairs that we use now. So there are conference room restrictions that are now in our buildings to make sure that we are practicing social distancing. So just as a reminder, so if there are individuals in there, make sure they clean the objects, like a telecom or a telephone or other, a keyboard or a mouse that might be used to show information on a screen. And so making sure that there are accessible wipes or other items to clean those objects down is very important. And cleaning frequently too. I know here, we try to work on cleaning every two hours as much as possible to reduce the transmission of COVID. So that's very important. So providing guidelines for the employees is very important. Keeping a hand sanitizer on hand, but if you can't, I mean, encouraging employees to continue to wash their hands every, for 20 seconds while in their bathroom or restroom rather than having a hand sanitizer that's accessible. So avoid having visitors at the workplace as much as possible. And so that will reduce your risk of transmission, but also encouraging all visitors to wear a mask. So I think with the Navajo Nation guidelines here, with the worksite safety guidelines, always keep that as a kind of on top of your list for Navajo Nation employees because this will be updated frequently. So there is guidelines for how to respond to case notifications and also the reminders around keeping your area clean and also following several checklists or screening options as well when you come to work. So these procedures and guidelines are very important. And so if businesses want to use this as their own guidelines, I hope they do. I hope it gives them some framework to provide guidelines for the businesses that are reopening. So check that frequently. And another item I mentioned earlier was that disinfectant safety. And this is just not an issue here on the Navajo Nation, or this is definitely a national issue and it has been since COVID started early on. So disinfectant safety has always been mentioned and as a priority from the Command Center that you don't drink or inject bleach, lysol or other disinfectants as a treatment for COVID-19. Also you ensure that you read the label to know what is on the, in the product, and also do not use hand sanitizer that contains methanol. And it's very toxic because it can really absorb into your skin or ingest it, it can be very toxic. So follow the label instructions on use and do not mix chemicals between different cleaning products, that's very dangerous as well. Also keeping products stored away, away from children as well. And if, if an accident does happen, there are, there is a poison help line at 1-800-222-1222. But disinfectants are very, can be poisonous and can cause harm or even death if swallowed or injected. So early on, we did hear of some cases around some, a few deaths and also some individuals being hospitalized, but in the last month or so, we have not heard any cases. So I just want to have everyone share this message with their family members and people at work or your coworkers, and it's just a good reminder. And as we continue to look at the weekend curfews, they're going to continue, Saturdays are always and, and also on the weekday during non-curfew hours, there is their approval to do driving gatherings and those could include internet services for kids or either religious services, funeral services, music events and other events as well. So within those, the recommendations from the Public Health Order is that event organizers and participants must comply with the following recommendations. So there's a difference between what the Public Health Orders say because those have to be enforced. And then, for example, some other, others are just recommendations, but this is an actual public health order and it was updated. And one of the recent public health orders that was in number 14 and it was in the recent public health order, but participants must stay in their vehicles for the entire event. Vehicles should only carry people from the same household. Vehicles must be at least six feet apart. Organizers and participants must wear face masks. Public restrooms are limited to more than, no more than five occupants at a time, and that really is dependent on the size of the restroom as well. Organizers must provide access to hand washing stations, sanitizers and gloves, and organizers must ensure high touch surfaces are regularly disinfected. So we shouldn't be seeing any kind of movement on weekends. And so I can go back to the Public Health Order as well, to some extent also the businesses that are re, that are being considered at 25%. So I always like this webpage because this is where private businesses can refer to, and this gives you a status. So as of August 17th, the Navajo Nation is reopening at 25% with moderate to high restrictions. And so the way the gating criteria works, as President mentioned, we assess the cases that are going up and down and also the, also the hospitalizations and also the number of people testing positive. Also we look at the ICU beds and also inpatient beds. So it's very, there's a formula to the reopening. So, and if all things go well and everyone is following the public health orders and also the recommendations, and today is the day to celebrate this evening, the four cases that only were reported. Four cases. I think that we should do a little clap on the internet. I mean, with that, we should all congratulate ourselves that we only have four cases reported today from the Navajo Epidemiology Center. The more, the less cases that we have every day, that means we are doing well and using the CDC Community Mitigation Measures to, that we can function and live in this COVID environment. As long as we continue to do the public health measures, as washing hands and all of those, we will move into a new stage. And so this reopening is for businesses. So some businesses have opened at 25%. So this isn't applied to government entities. And when I talk about the policies and procedures, so any business on the Navajo Nation right now, that is non-governmental should have these in place. So there should be insurance, assurance of physical distance between personnel, customers and any member of the public at the place of business and also that it's maximized that keeping six feet apart between persons, persons is possible at all times. So this is, this should be in a business's policies and procedures. They also need to address requests of any personnel who are members of a vulnerable population for special accommodation. They also need to provide that the entity or organization will carry sufficient and appropriate PPE based on industry best practices. And also provide that the entity or organization will carry sufficient disinfectant products and that they will require hygiene practices such as cleaning frequently touched surfaces and hand washing, that they provide for conducting regular employee COVID-19 screenings such as temperature checks, checklist or diagnostic testing. They also provide for an ongoing safety training and education on COVID-19 for employees. And they also have standards on how to respond to suspected and confirmed cases of COVID-19 among employees. So there are policies and procedures. So there are policies and procedures that would need to happen. And they need to call the Command Center to report any suspected or confirmed cases, which is nine two eight eight seven one seven zero one four. So and also and then and sometimes the changing the physical environment of some buildings may not be appropriate or necessary. So I hope that during this time, businesses can increase ventilation, also install any physical barriers to avoid exposure. And also and and the workers have some sort of flexible work schedules and leave policies that can support um if there is a COVID case in their family. So these are all other options that employees can work with their staff, especially um arranging for telecommuting or also making sure that they use telecommunications as a way of meeting. So those are the recommendations for businesses. And so as um President mentioned, we do look at these gating criteria around the number of cases and also positive tests and also the capacity to treat um all patients with um without a crisis care. And so right here, we are on the orange status of the businesses. So on the orange status, we um are looking at twenty-five percent of the maximum occupancy allowed for most businesses. So right now, there should be only twenty-five percent of um occupancy of these businesses that are operating, that dining or waiting establishments are allowed um for drive-through only for like food, banks and financial institutions. Barbershops and hair salons are appointment only and allow for allow time for cleaning between appointments. Um so if you have your haircut at some salon, make sure that there's adequate time to make sure they disinfect the chair and they sweep up and everything. So and also has to be appointment only, so there's really no walk-in services for those um type of businesses. Also, for marinas and parks right now, there are no visitors or tourists allowed on the Navajo Nation. So as long as that legislation is still in place um by the Navajo Nation and we will um not be opening tribal parks um to the tourists and public right now. But also not allowed in the orange phase is that there are youth programs are not allowed, casinos and video poker, museums, flea markets, roadside markets, gyms, recreation facilities and movie theaters. So those are not allowed in um the orange phase, which we're in right now. So for us to get to the yellow phase, we would need to continue to monitor our behaviors and our impact of how we've adopted in the current phase of orange. And so in a couple of weeks, if we're all doing really well, we will see um some of these restrictions lifted so that we will move on to the yellow phase. And so that way fifty percent of the maximum occupancy will be allowed for businesses. So I think that is definitely important and that is our goal. And when we get to seventy-five percent, that um most businesses will be operating. And so but as long as we don't have a vaccine, we don't have a treatment, we have to consider and rely on these public health um measures to care for ourselves and other people. So if you want to look onto this webpage, it's navajo reopening dot Navajo dash innocent dot G O V. Um I know that the font might be kind of um light on that one, but I just wanted to go over the the reopening guidelines to give everyone an idea um of those guidelines. And just as a kind reminder that we are all in on this together, we can um be hopeful. We're very resilient people and I just hope that we um come together tonight and just remind our family members. Um it's sometimes it's good to remind ourselves of our daily behavior. So um you can share them with your um relatives tonight or till tomorrow and just say, um these are the things that we learned. It's you might be experiencing a family member that has um that might be exposed to COVID or might have COVID, but just know that there is help. And so if you um need assistance, um we do um continue to operate the Health Command Operations Center um five days out of the week and we're on standby on Saturdays and Sunday. But you can call the nine two eight eight seven one seven zero one four um to request for assistance, especially if you're COVID um positive and you need food and you need to be isolated or hotels um are still operating um out in Chin Lee, Best Western. So um we if you cannot isolate and you meet the criteria of to isolate away from your family and you can still be placed in isolation in Chin Lee. And we will be continuing to reopen other isolation areas as we are beginning to access our CARES Act dollars. So once that happens, the Command Center will be able to provide more isolations in preparing for the winter. I did see comments on how we're preparing for the winter. We use um isolation or tent kits, which we also call healing kits for isolation for um individuals that are sick away from their families. And so there were these um tent kits um that we use to isolate families and we distributed close to five hundred um tent kits during this um pandemic. And we do have supplies for those um that will be continued. But the danger of that is as the weather gets colder, we cannot um continue to provide these tent kits to families um as that will definitely be concerned. So that's why we have the option of the hotel in a hotel isolation um area. And then we also will have the congrega area that will be open to continue to care for individuals um that are going to be um tested positive for COVID and that need to isolate. And it does um have the ability to um expand to an alternate care site where it will require um a higher level of medical staffing care for individuals that will need oxygen. So that's how we're prepare we are preparing. Um through the current CARES Act dollars, we do have um money for the for our purchase of personal protective equipment, which we call PPE, that will be um provided to individuals across the Navajo Nation. We also have um the food boxes that we we will continue to purchase. And through this pandemic, we have learned from the patients that are have recovered from COVID nineteen through our um case management team. I just want to thank our contact tracers and our and the con- um case managers and our collaborator collaborators. We work with um Don Hopkins, we work with Cope, and those are entities. And CDC is very important too in the work that we do. So there are food um in uh availability because if you are sick, obviously you cannot be out in the community, as I mentioned, um that you shouldn't be going to the school, you shouldn't be going to work, um you shouldn't be going other places and because you could be transmitting the disease. So if you uh the best recommendation is that if you can isolate at home and you need assistance with food, the Command Center can assist you with these um requests. So just know those are the ongoing um community mitigation areas. And there's also health facilities where they continue to do COVID nineteen testing as well. So I know that most of them now are testing asymptomatic and symptomatic individuals, but for asymptomatic, of course, you would have to have identified as a close contact um to get tested. So those are ongoing measures as you will continue to see this there. These have to continue to be in place in order to activate. We don't know when a second wave will occur. We just have to be prepared um for ourselves. I know um President mentioned the wood getting wood for your elders and for yourself. Um do those throughout the week on Saturdays, prepare as much as you can. And also um there's also emergency guidelines that we try to offer um in case you do get sick. There is emergency contacts, there's other um emergency lists you have to have, you have to have a backpack or just um minor things like that to help you prepare. And so I hope to share those kinds of information as we continue to go into the fall season and um get your flu shot as well. Your flu shots are very important. And late end of September, we will be doing a whole campaign around getting your flu shots as well. And so I look forward to um looking out for information to get that out to the communities from the states that we work with. So I just want to thank everyone for being on the call this evening and share this information with your relatives. I apologize, I didn't um speak a lot of this in Navajo, but I just um would want to encourage you guys to um share with others and information is knowledge. So stay safe and um it will save lives and have a good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.